This meeting has come to an end today is Thursday, June 15, 2017. This is a special meeting of the Prescott City Council. Rule call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox is excused and absent.
Move to item 3A.
Discussion Business License Demonstration.
Good afternoon, City Council. This is Lars Johnson, Budget and Tax Manager. And our item today, we were asked to give a presentation of what the online directory is going to look like for the business license database. This is still in testing phase. It's not live to the public, so any comments you have or feedback is appreciated at this point and in the future, of course. I'm just going to go through some examples of what this search function, how it works. We have, you know, just a limited information that's available to the public on these licenses, but you can search based on the business name, the license number, address, or the business description. But this business description is actually something that the applicant gives us and we just use that. So it's totally customizable to what they want, how they want to explain their business. So for example, if we wanted to look up under a business name, if you're looking for pizza, you could type in pizza and hit submit. And anyone that has pizza in their business name. So right now, Bill's Pizza and Pizza Hut, you could find this. If you're on your mobile phone, you could click this number and you'd be able to call them right away. You see, the information here is pretty limited. It gives you the address, the date the license was issued, the start date is information they provide us, so when the business started. And then there's two categories of business activity based on the NACs code, which is Northern Arizona Industry Classification. And so then, for example, if someone were to give you, or someone in the public wanted to check if a business license was accurate or valid, you could plug in a number here to see if, who the owner of that business license is. And that license number is for adventure travel. You could also search based on an address. And you're able to click this X here to close out what you just searched. And then, for example, we want to see all the businesses on Cortez that have licensed so far. And then submit that. It would give you a list of all of those businesses. And then, for example, on the description, if you wanted to search for someone that wrote jewelry in their description, you could put that in and submit it. And you'll probably see a lot of these are special events, but it'll give you a list of all the licenses with that and their description. There's also an ability to, this is one of the common requests we get is, you know, what are the new business licenses you've had over the last month? So you could do an issued after or before, you could put that in and generate the list of what are the new businesses who've licensed. In the future, we're developing a method for when you search and get the results, you'll be able to export that to Excel and then you could, a business or the person asking could then use that information for whatever purpose they wanted. There's four different categories of licenses that you could also search by. Just businesses inside the city limits, business licenses for outside, or businesses that are based outside, and then vacation rentals and structured sober living homes. So if you wanted to get all of the inside city limit businesses, you could just use that and hit submit and it'd give you the list. In the future, then you could dump that into Excel. And then the final thing I was going to show here is here's the main categories of business activities. And again, this is based on the industry standards. So for example, we wanted to see all the construction industry business licenses, you could select that and hit submit. And if you're looking for someone to work on your house, you could get a list of businesses under construction category. There's one more thing I wanted to point out because we are licensing home-based businesses. What we're doing there is if they tell us they're a home-based business, we don't show the address of that. We provide the phone number of the business, but we've received a lot of feedback for those that are applying for home-based business licenses. They don't want their home address published, obviously.
You know, Lars, can I stop you there for a minute?
Yes.
You know, you just talked about unzipping my fly in public simply because I got a business located downtown. You can show them everything about me. Well, I want the same. I want everybody to be treated equally. That was the point of that whole exercise. If you're going to do business in the city of Prescott, we're going to go to the point of making everybody who does business in the city of Prescott have a license, treat us all equally.
The, I think there's an option for us to explore in the future on the renewal process to, for those that are renewing their license to opt out of certain things that they want to public information. Right now, that's the policy we're taking is if it's a home-based business, we're not showing the address based on feedback.
Can I ask you a question? If somebody's doing business out of a home, do they get taxed appropriately?
Yes.
I mean, do they, does their house get reclassified and that information get done appropriately?
Couldn't speak to the property tax type of things, but on sales tax, yes. Their sales tax applies across the board, even if they're a home-based retailer, for example, an online business who sells things out of their home, they're subject to sales tax and we do have those licenses as well.
Do transient businesses that are located in Cottonwood that come to do business in the city of Prescott, do they have to have a business license?
They do, yep. And construction's a fine example of that. Contractors based out of the city that come in here to build homes or work on a home, they'll need a license.
How about sell blinds?
Blinds, exactly.
Just sharing a wee because there's people out there that come here all the time. I just want to make sure they're being checked, just like the rest of us.
Yep, and then professional services, you're coming in to appraisals, home inspections, engineering, if you're coming into the city physically, the business license ordinance would apply to you.
Well, I'd like to say, because I'll use Shiska's term that he's been asking through the whole budget, what do I get for my money? And as a businessman and somebody that disagreed with the business license, at least with this, I'm getting something for my money.
Yep, and I think this is great. It also helps us with, for example, public records requests where we don't have to have people go through that whole process to get a list of businesses. They can go here, it's online, they can generate whatever list they want.
Did I pay?
You're on the list. We can check it. Yeah, and there's some ideas we're playing around with this test phase. One of them is feedback. We're thinking about letting, on the renewal process, have a field for businesses to put in their website so that there would be a direct link from this to a website that they may have. Unfortunately, we didn't have that on the application phase, but on the renewal, we can ask for that.
Yeah, we got a question coming from Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Here again, something like Blair, I think we're getting something for our money. I'm not quite sure what it is, all right? But something's better than nothing. One of the things that, here again, bothers me a little bit, we talked a little bit about it this morning in the budget and had to do a code enforcement. And how many of you are there that are going to run around checking everybody who's peddling cheesecloth and everything else all over the city or whatever the case would be? I mean, what is the ability of Lars, who's, you know, one guy, to run around and make sure everybody who's, you know, collecting shekels in town is paying their business license, number one. And then, number two, all of the people that come into the city, especially on the best weekends out of the year, clog up our streets, don't pay an impact fee to do so, but they, you know, they clog up our streets. And then they go pedal everything in the center of the town. Very few of them are collecting sales taxes, or they're supposed to be. But guess what? They sure putting a cost of services on the community. Are you going to be going around the plaza to make sure everybody doing business in the city has their business license?
So there was a big policy shift this year about special events, and I think it's made a very, a more fair playing field in that area. The business license applies to across the board, whether you're coming in for a special event or if you're physically located here. And with that.
It's a shame we're not on TV, so you could say that real loud and clear. It applies across the board, all right?
Yep. So I appreciate this opportunity to explain it, too. It's great. As well as when businesses, when they're coming in to get a business license, we're checking if they're a, if they're doing business and they're subject to sales tax, we educate them upfront on the requirement to then give us, number one, their sales tax license so we can follow up to make sure they're paying tax. And if they don't have one, we tell them how to get one and all of that process.
You mean that they're collecting the tax?
Right.
The consumer pays the tax, the salespeople collect it.
Exactly. So that was in regards to special events. I forget if you had a second part to your question.
No, that, no, it's about anybody, whether it's a special event. I had to call the cops yesterday. We had a bunch of street peddlers peddling clothes and silverware and everything else on the street, set up shop right in front of one of the other stores down the street, and that's not righteous. The people that are in that store are paying exorbitant property taxes to begin with and collecting sales tax, again, and they have to perform to a certain standard. And if this city's going to allow other people to come into town and not apply to the same standard, shame on us.
I have a question, Mayor. Lars, do you feel like you're beat up over that?
No.
I guess one of my big complaints, and it has to do not necessarily with the city, but it could later in the future, but whenever you talk to the state of Arizona and you start talking about licensing and things, their computer systems don't talk to one another. So the Secretary of State's office doesn't talk to the registered contractors, nobody down there has a clue what's going on. I really believe with our technology now that this should interface with the Chamber's website, YCCA's website, it's a sales tool, it's a tool to bring in commerce, and if we're going to do this to do it right, I think they should all be interactive so everybody knows who's doing business within the community and how to get a hold of them. So I would suggest in the future that maybe we have an interactive website with those folks that are doing commerce in the city.
I think that's a good idea.
I would just be sort of cautious about that, that, you know, the public, the government website, you know, it's, if we're talking about putting links.
Just link.
Okay, then we're good, then I don't.
Yeah, see, because I got to tell you, in the window covering business with my company, it's linked to other manufacturers. And that's important because then it helps you sell what you're selling. And when you start talking about sales tax dollars in this community, the more we can sell, the more money we make as far as I can.
And I believe in Nate's here, and we put links to other, we put links on our website to other places as well, so probably the Chamber Commerce and other organizations. So in the same regard, if the Chamber wants to put a link to this on their website, that's great. But, you know, that's probably the extent that we would want to do that. Let me just comment, too, by the way, on this.
You always like throwing water on the fire, don't you?
No, I'm just trying to clarify things. Just for the council's education is we're going to roll out a whole new public records request system July 1st, been working on it, called Next Request. And so similar to this, these public records being easily accessible, going forward, all of our public records requests are going to be electronic. And it's, and similar to this is we're going to post sort of the common public records of people who are going to request, we're just going to be able to post that on that website so that you don't actually have to, you know, email a form and, and then get the document back. So for instance, campaign finance reports tend to be something that everybody wants to see. Well, those are going to be able to, you know, after July 1st, be able to post those on this public records link so that, you know, if you want to look for it, you just search for it, it's already available to you. So going this route, sort of this e-government route, public records is going, our whole public records process will go that way as well. Simplify things, make things quicker, and if people take documents electronically, there's no fee, there's no copy cost or anything like that. So along these same lines, you know, this is the kind of stuff that really is, at the end of the day, saves a lot of money, a lot of time, it's really efficient process. So this is, you know, this is the kind of thing that we're, we're done a lot to move towards.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yes, Lars, Mark, great job.
Yeah.
This is really impressive and I appreciate it because I know it's been difficult to get all of this going and to do this at the same time, it's really impressive, so thank you. I sit on the Special Events Committee and Jane, everyone that comes, and we didn't have the opportunity to do this before we had a business license. They cannot sell anything on the square unless they have a business license. All vendors must have a business license. And she's very polite in how she tells everybody to do it and what the procedure is. And so I do think that this has been a real advantage to the downtown businesses now because now at least the, you know, it's a little more fair because everybody's paying the sales tax, not just the people that have the brick and mortar, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Nice job, thank you.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Thanks, Mayor. Lars, how many signups do we have?
Current to date, 2,858 applications.
Okay.
1,808 of those are for inside city limits.
Really?
So the rest, 1,000, there's about 960 that are from outside, so they're special events, construction, those types of things.
Wow, and how many businesses do we estimate we have here in the city, within the city limits?
If I could know, that'd be great, but I hesitate.
I've heard, I've heard 10,000.
So that number was, that number was thrown out as an educated guess. We have to obviously now take off the rentals off of that. So there was 3,000 rentals, so if you deduct that, 7,000. I think that 10,000 though included out-of-city businesses as well.
And what do you think is the, let's say, the number of, what do you, what is the category that has signed up the most?
Pet food stores.
Yes, yes, those are all covered. There's only one in town anyway. One real one.
One real one.
For now, I think.
One that's good enough.
Some of the basic studies or looking at, I've done, it looks like it's pretty equal across the board for types of businesses coming to apply. I don't think we have one area being more compliant than the other.
And how are you cross-referencing to find people who have not yet signed up?
Number one is our sales tax license database. And recently, I've also got a list of businesses that are registered in the zip codes in the area from the Corporation Commission. Those are two lists I'm using right now.
And what are you doing to remind these folks that they need this license?
Right now, it's just because of the bulk, the great number that haven't complied, simply sending letters and follow-up letters. Eventually, I think it'll become personal contact.
Thank you.
I've got a question on the, I think it was sober homes. Did you have a category for sober homes?
I did, right under the business application type. You'll be able to select that and hit submit and generate the list.
Why don't you hit it, let me see what you got.
Right now, unfortunately, they're not showing here, but we will eventually have it before we go live.
So these are the approximately 65 that we think we have? It doesn't count like Los Fuentes and any other homes, right?
We have 44 applications for structured sober living homes.
Okay. So if a company like this, new one that just came in, Rural Life or something like that, do you have a location of every one of their homes or just the basic business?
It's a license for each home, so you'll see the address.
And remember, that process for the structured sober home license is a lot more involved. You know, we do the inspections, we, you know, our department, code compliance, community development are reviewing the applications. We require them to submit all those things in the ordinance. So it takes, I think, I'm not making excuses for them, but it takes a long time to, you know, as we recall, to process all that through before we can actually issue the license because there's a lot of documentation and then we have building safety and code and go into the home and actually do the physical inspection. So it's kind of a process to get those through as opposed to just issuing the business licenses, kind of just almost an over-the-counter, electronic counter kind of issuance.
And if I could just follow up, Mayor, and, you know, and this database is only have, does only have the licenses that have been issued. And as the city attorney was pointing out, a lot of the sober living are still in the process, even though they've applied, the license has not been issued yet. Again, you know, we have a lot on there with the numbers that Lars gave us. You know, this has been a very busy, if you will, six months as we try to transition the state and with those taxpayers there. We are continuing, as Lars pointed out, several different outreaches to reach more people and we will continue that throughout the year. And Councilwoman Orr, appreciate your comments on, you know, the search option on the website and, you know, we'd like to take all the credit, but actually IT did all the work. So that's, yeah, Kenny, our web guy, did all the work and of course Nate was working with him. And just as a kind of a highlight on that, this is on the city's new website that we'll be rolling out in the next few weeks and this will go live when that goes lives. It's mobile friendly, as Lars mentioned, so you're going to be able to do this on your phone when you're on the move, you'll be able to hit the phone numbers and call the businesses and that type of stuff. So it'll be good, we should have it by the first part of July, we should see this whole thing go live.
So Mark, you just click on business and development?
And it will have a, I think it'd be a good idea for us to have a full demo of the whole, not the whole website, but to give you guys a better overview of the website, but it will be part of business development. Lars might need to help me out here, probably, business licenses. And again, it's running slow because it's running on a development server right now. Oh, yeah, search right there at the top. So then you just hit search and you'll be able to go to that screen we were at. So again, again, very mobile friendly. It's been a big development issue and Kenny and IT has done a great job with it and Nate is working on upgrading our infrastructure to secure our website and make sure we have a very reliable website for the public. And that's why it's taken a little while to get this out, but we're going to get there in the next month.
So Mark, I'm sorry, Mayor, if you mind, are we going to, let's say, develop this to the point where if a business wanted to pay for additional things on that page, on, when people click and go to their business or their, you know, could, would there be something, let's say you've got a list of businesses, would there be something from a learn more standpoint that businesses could purchase?
Well, I think, you know, we don't want to duplicate Google search or Google Maps, but as Lars had mentioned, we are looking at adding the website as a link with the renewal process. So if Lamerson's Jewelry wants to link to their website, they'll be able to have this on here so they can go right from here.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. Understanding that we had quite a dilemma with structured living and keeping in mind that structured living included those places delivering medical care, whether it be for mental, physical, emotional, you know, healthcare in the city limits of Prescott. Now, I would assume, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong, all of those places are subject to state law and all of those places are subject to inspections?
Our structured sober living license is specifically for structured sober, unlicensed, they're not licensed by the state. In other words, the one of the, you know, we went down from that 175, 200 number for a lot of reasons. One of the many reasons was that some of the operators decided that they would put their homes under their state, their DHS license because they operate a detox facility or medically, a facility that provides medical services that's licensed. So some of those operators decided they were going to put their homes under their state license, so then they fall out of our, bless you, our definition of structured sober living, which is those sober living homes that are not licensed by the state. So to the extent they have, they have to comply with all city zoning and all other city codes, there's very, there is really no state regulation of structured sober living. As you recall, a couple of years ago, Noel Campbell tried to get that bill passed and nobody had any real interest in, well, there was not enough interest to adopt that and so we went to the sort of the city regulation. So they are, they are not licensed by or regulated by the state for any really intensive purposes.
But they are by us.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the whole point.
So indeed, do we have 65 or 175? Just because they're not functioning the same as they used to be doesn't mean they're not there.
I think there, I, what we've concluded is there is a real reduction. It's not just in name. In other words, they haven't just sort of changed the name and started to fly under the radar. There is an actual, real, hard number reduction. One of, I mean, one of the reasons is this insurance company crackdown, that's certainly a significant reason. But I think our regulate, our zoning regulations and our, and our structured sober living regulations contributed to that. I mean, we have a, we have a real, actual reduction of 100 or more structured sober living homes since the high point.
Well, thank you for that, John. I appreciate your comments on that. City manager, I know your staff's short today, but I don't see the fire department here or anybody. Do we have any idea how many of them have been fire inspected for public health and safety?
Are you guys aware of how many have gone through the fire inspections?
They're, they're working through the whole inspection process right now. They've been, you know, I know inspectors have been out, they've, they've contacted them with the changes that need to be made to bring them into compliance, so they're working through that process and that's, that takes some time.
And obviously, after the 1st of July, those inspections will be conducted by the Building Inspection Department.
So is there going to be a certificate of inspection issued to each business that you inspect?
Yes, there'll be a C of O.
Not, not just, not just sober living or not just mental health care or whatever, but businesses, period?
Well, I don't know if they'll issue a certificate to that, just the businesses, fire, the business, just the business inspection is much less of an inspection. It's the basic fire and that type of stuff. That's why it's significantly less in fee. It's, it's.
Forty?
Forty dollars compared to 450. So it's, it's a lot less of an inspection. So I don't believe we're issuing certificates on that, but once they are completed and passed, the license is issued. So if a license been issued, they made it through the inspection.
Restaurants and bars, where do they fall?
Well, they're in the business license, but that doesn't mean that the health department isn't inspecting them for health compliance. That's not something the city does, that's something the health department does.
County.
County health.
County health regulates, you know, the cleanliness of restaurants and bars, you see their grades, ABs. And liquor department regulates the liquor issues, so they're, you know, bars, a bar restaurant has a whole series of regulations and inspections that they need to comply with. Our, you know, fire safety is one of many.
Okay, but we do inspect them for fire safety, that was my point.
Yes, we do, we do.
Any questions, comments?
Well, I just see Nate is in the audience, I just wanted to say thank you. Good job. It's a lot of work.
Okay, yeah, I applaud the efforts of anybody that worked on this. I think this is a significant improvement from where we've been and I know we all appreciate it. We'll go to the next item.
3B, Presentations on the Ongoing Efforts to Improve efficiencies Within the Solid Waste Division.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Lars said, I'm going to take five minutes, his presentation, so ours is only six minutes. You know, we have been hearing you all along that, you know, customer service is number one priority for you. one priority for, for you, Council, City Manager, and is for us. And we have been working on it all along, you know, in our solid waste division. I say, we have done a lot of improvement. Mr. Black's going to talk about it. It's cost-saving accountability and really being compatible. I think we always want to be compatible, meaning we can compete and beat anyone who can provide the same services, working as a team with all other departments, as well as outside the stakeholders, Prescott Creek and all that. We had a very good conversation with Mr. Lamar a few months back, as far as helping each other, our code enforcement, because after all, you know, we are a big department. We need, just to give you an example, I have in my cellphone, we had an email from our code enforcement at 8:20 today that we had some illegal dumping. And at 9:52, Mr. Black responds that it's all taken care of, and then they respond to us that we are amazing and awesome. That's the kind of cooperation we have between them. And I really want to give a lot of credit to Will and his management staff, the entire, I have personally experienced it. We have some of the most professional, polite, courteous people working there at the transfer station. With that, we're going to talk about some of the improvements, and a little bit about the construction that we just finished.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I've got a, my name's Willie Black, I'm the Solid Waste Superintendent. I've got a short presentation, talk about the efficiencies that we've experienced over the last several months at, in solid waste, and what's coming up for solid waste as well. Most exciting thing for us was the transfer station construction. That's our ceremonial first truck dumping on the floor. That was the main floor replacement, and our two main scales. And the significance of this is this was two projects that were combined and completed at the same time, so there was only one inconvenience to our customers. We weren't having limited access twice for the customers. So, definitely improvement for customer service. Next thing I want to talk about is overtime. One of the things I'm passionate about, and have always been passionate about, is overtime. And overtime is sometimes a necessary evil to complete the job that you have to do every day. But when I take a look at overtime, is what's overtime used for? I took a look at our overtime budget and looked to reduce it for, for this year, and so far, we've got an 18% reduction year-to-date in overtime. And how we've done that is through flexing time. We work to a 40-hour week. We don't pay overtime unless it hits over 40 hours. Our residential routes are unbalanced. Mondays and Fridays are heaviest days, so the drivers work longer. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, they're light, so they work less hours. So, what we did is we started flexing the time. When they're done, they go home, and we're trying to eliminate that overtime. It's been a good response from the drivers. That advantage that you can go home early, flex your time, they like that. I may be talking later about route changes we're going to make to, to fix that. The other thing, we staff special events. There's a trash collection that's needed throughout the special events. Taking a look at those to make sure that we're right sizing the events, make sure we have the proper people out there, and making sure the trash is off the ground, and it's not a problem for anyone. Cart delivery and repair is an example of, prior to August of 2016, when you called in to have your residential cart repaired, you were told that leave it out in front of your house, three days it'll be done. The problem with that is, if you live in an HOA, you can't leave that cart out. So, it definitely presents a problem, and as we found out earlier, that that's actually against the city ordinance. The driver covered the entire city five days a week, so that was actually inefficient, and they never finished the work each day. What we did is, we set it up in a zone system, just like our residential routes are, and the truck actually is working in the zone the day after we're there. So, if you have a Monday collection, we're repairing barrels in that Monday zone on Tuesday. What we're able to do is, it saves miles by doing that, and we finish every day now. That's improved customer service, because we can actually tell you that the day your barrel will be repaired or delivered is on, whether it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, it'll be done. Roll-off service, that's another thing that we looked at improving. What had happened prior, if you called in for a roll-off, if you had a roll-off at your, your business or your home, we pulled people from the transfer station and did it immediately. That delivery hall, whatever you wanted, we did it. That's actually very efficient, inefficient to do, because you're pulling people from other projects, and you're not getting other things done. What we did is, we scheduled it two days a week. We run typically Tuesdays and Fridays, and we split it up into zones. We're on the north end of town one day, and we're on the, the south end of town another day. What that does for us is it increases density, and it allows the truck to be able to move quicker and be able to get more hauls per day. In our commercial section, the available trucks we have, we have five front-load trucks. Two of those trucks are newer, and our three backup trucks, or the other three trucks, they range in age from nine years, 10 years, and 11 years old. So, not too good, not too reliable. The problem that we had was, Monday was our, our peak day, and we needed four trucks to run every day. The rest of the days of the week, it varied from needing one truck to two to three trucks. So, we took a look at is adjusting pickup days, took a lot of people on a Monday pickup, and found where the routes weren't full, and we filled them up. We've spread the days out, we only run the max is three trucks a day. What we're able to do, we've, we've saved, the other thing we've done is upsized customers. An example of upsizing a customer, if you had a three-cubic-yard container going twice a week, you were getting six cubic yards a week. Well, why not give you a six cubic yard and go in there once a week? It's the same price for the customer, but benefit for the city is you're only going in there one time a week. We did as much of that as we could with the containers we had. What we found in, in looking back at the first month is, we saved about 130 miles a week for the trucks. That's going to vary a little bit. We might need to put a partial truck back out there. But what we'll do is, we'll put the partial truck on a day when we're only running two trucks or one truck, so that we don't have a problem. We'll spread out the wealth a little bit. In our residential section, I mentioned the imbalanced routes. Currently, we run seven routes a day. What we're looking to do is adjust our, our routes, boundary change to plan for growth. As Mr. Hash mentioned earlier, is, is we don't get any revenue, or we don't get any money to pay for carts or trucks as part of any impact fees. So, I got to try to make it work. What we're going to do is adjust our boundaries and try to level out the, the week and our growth areas. We see the growth in Tuesdays and Fridays, so our lighter days will be Tuesdays and Fridays. And as we grow, those will just grow, and we're only going to run exactly what we need for the day. Tentatively, our new routes will be in effect, I'm hoping, October 1st of this year. We're going to do a lot of outreach for that. I'm, I'm used to doing that. We'll work with John Heine and, and put the word out. Had some great success with the transfer station construction and getting the word out to people. It's only an impact to few people in, in different areas. We'll make sure that definitely they're aware of the changes. This is part of the presentation that I ask you, please don't laugh. This is actually our alleys here in the city. You may not notice alleys when you go places, but I look at trash everywhere I go. I don't care if I'm on vacation or not. In the top left-hand corner, we've got at least two different sized containers in that alley, and we actually collect on both sides of the alley. Yes, we go in one side, turn around, and we come back out and do the other side of the alley. And you can see this bottom right-hand corner, the problem with this one is there's a do-not-enter, that's a one-way alley, that we're actually going in two different directions on. We need to fix that stuff. The plan with the alleys, most of the alleys have curb-side carts in them. We do double-sided collection. We're going to be moving the service onto one side of the alley. Estimated completion is September 1st for all alleys. This next year in FY '18, we're going to be looking at moving to the 300-gallon containers in the alleys. The efficiency gained there is that the driver's picking up four homes every time they pick up a barrel. Instead of having to stop and pick up four homes or four barrels, they're going to pick up four to one. Much more efficient, and the other obvious advantage is the surface on the alley is getting less use. It's cut in half immediately, so our mileage changes, too. We've got a couple alleys, due to safety reasons, that we're going to redirect service to the street, and that's very minimal. And we'll do the outreach to the customers to make sure that they're aware. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions or comments.
Questions, comments?
Just one comment that do-not-enter, you should probably get with Public Works, to fix that sign that do-not-enter one way.
He's just not going to do it anymore.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that update.